FOIA request for that, the Freedom of Information. Now, I pulled up the Oregon Public Records statutes and the only place that I can see that that I would, that my request should, could have been denied is under Section 27 of ORS 192-345, which precludes people, the public, having access to things like credit card numbers or card expiration dates, passwords, things like that. I really had no interest in that and so I thought that I should have been allowed to have a summary, which is what I would get under ORS 192-360. I would like to know what the county's policy is on providing access to rather straight expenditure of public funds. I'd be happy with a summary as long as it would break it down into categories that would be useful to me, such as by each commissioner, how much was spent on gas, airplanes, hotels, registration fees, food. I don't really care where people stayed in hotels or how much, whether they had a hamburger or a sirloin steak for lunch. I would like it broken out though in those rather generic categories. And by reading the public statute, the ORS 192, I can't see why I would need a FOIA request. So could you please elucidate on what the public, the county policy is?
If you'd like, I'm happy to respond.
Christian, would you?
Now, the public comment period isn't really meant to be a question and answer session with the board. However, it sounds like you were in the process of making a request. The request you've described is not something that I think we would have any issue with. I wonder if there was perhaps some miscommunication between you and Ms. Schaubold as to whether or not she was then waiting for you to make a formal written records request, which is how we normally handle that process. I'd be happy to chat with you and I'm sure Ken would be as well to make sure you get this information as soon as-
Yeah, I did ask to see the records and she said I would be required to file a FOIA, Freedom of Information, as a request, which seemed not to-
Yeah, which is, which you're right, is not applicable. That's a federal statute. All we require is a written request, email-
It was an email request.
For, and if we, if we can tell from the request what it is you're asking for, sometimes there's some clarification that goes back and forth. That's generally all that's required. Again, I'm not any more familiar with your situation than what you've just described, but I'd be happy and I'm sure Ken would as well to chat with you, you know, later today or after the meeting if you'd like, just to make sure that Carolina has your contact information and we can get that information to you.
So, in answer directly though, is there any written policy or do you just follow the Oregon statute?
We do have some policies when it comes to fees and costs associated with requests. Otherwise, we follow the statute.
Could I be provided with a copy of that?
Absolutely.
That would be great. And, and I have another really quick question. It also goes to public records. Am I going to have any issue if I want to look at the expenditures for, well, no, I'll rephrase that question. Could you tell me as a, as the board, what is, is going on that would be driving higher costs for landfill, the land, closed landfills in Newburgh and Boyson?
Again, this really, public comment isn't meant to be a question and answer session with the board.
Then I would just say I'd like to see that explored and-
That's fine and we're happy to chat, Ken and I can chat with you and you're always welcome to contact your commissioners individually outside of, of these meetings, but public comment is really an opportunity for the public to-
Well, I would, this is a concern I have.
Yeah, no.
I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Appreciate it, yeah.
I would talk to you, right?
And Ms. Cross?
Yes.
If you'd like to email me, I will get you that information if you're having a hard time navigating how to get it. I know that usually it's pretty cut and dry to get that information to you, but if you, if you want to email me directly, I can, we can go from there, but I think that's good information. I think you should have it and I think it definitely bears scrutiny.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
May I say something to Christian? Is this appropriate time to ask a question or a comment to Christian as opposed to Maggie?
It depends.
Okay, I was just gonna comment that one experience that Mark Cross and I have shared is a concern that we'll be forced to pay for a pay of fee as part of the information request.
Correct. The county does have a standard fee schedule. Our practice in the past has been if the, and this is again derived from the statute, if the, if the request is going to cost more than $25, we're required to give folks a cost estimate and our practice has been generally across the board for citizens, media, whoever, that we do charge for those requests.
And I know that for me at least, that was a financially limiting, I chose not to pursue it because of the finances and I'm guessing that other people would experience that as well.
Some people might and that's, that's the current policy of the board. That's something the board can reconsider at any time.
Okay. I do notice that Pastor Claybaugh did arrive, so I'm gonna sort of break with our normal flow because he did make the trip down here. And so Jeff, if you want to come forward, I just want to tell you a little bit about him because Jeff Claybaugh is the, the pastor for now at First Christian and is going to be leaving our community and, and moving outside of McMinnville into, of a more rural setting. But I do have to say, and, and one of the reasons why I asked Jeff to be here today is because Pastor Claybaugh and I have been working on a number of different projects. One of them has to do with finding a place for kids to hang out and you have graciously offered the use of your church and your congregation has offered the use of your church for breakfast program where people are finding all kinds of help, city outreach for household items. But you've taken the concept of a church, not just as a building, but as a way to help people who are really in need. And I just want to use this opportunity to thank you for being what you have been in our community. And so that's why I, I want to thank you for that and if, if you would pray for us.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. I would invite you to all pray with me. Dear Lord, God of creation and all that is good, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today to do what we can for the betterment of our community and of our citizens. Thank you for your many, many abundant blessings and thank you for life itself and for the measure of health that we need in order to fulfill our callings and for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. And thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you and thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the government and since you have established those whose very authorities are to promote peace and order and justice, I pray to you from the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners, for Mary, Rick and Casey, and I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to serve amid the many conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement and personal peace in their own lives and joy in their tasks. I pray, Lord, for the agenda set before them today and ask you to please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our great county. In your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
That was wonderful. Thank you Pastor. And if I don't see you before you go, Godspeed and thanks for all you've done for our community.
I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for being here today, but I do hope I see you before you go.
I think you will.
Okay, good deal. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to public comment. David Wall, if you would come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
You should give him money instead of kind words when he's talking. I mean, personal money, not technical.
And, and, well, I'm not gonna say anything.
This comment period is just for them to talk about, right?
That's okay. Bless you. My name's David S. Wall. I live at, or my address is P.O. Box 756, Newburgh, Oregon 97132. First on deck, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Kula. I believe it rhymes with hula, but glad you're here. And, but there is a sidebar chastisement for the county administrator. You knew when this man, this gentleman was elected, you had plenty of time to make arrangements with a webpage, Pastor, to have everything set in place to where he had an email the day he was elected and two, when he was sworn in, he should have had a complete webpage and all the ancillary things that go with it. So please take care of that to date forthwith. Then we'll move on to, we had a couple of deaths on, on the bypass and it's, it's come to my thinking that concrete K rails, and I know this is ODOT area, but when we're talking county roads and your influences with the state, concrete K rails could have produced, could have prevented that. Now, I'm not saying that every road has to be strictly K rails, but the traffic people know how to fix that problem. With reference to tax relief, as we all know, property tax, or property owners were paying 3% per year and that's compounded, but that's transferred over to people who rent. And Newburgh has this new task force they're looking at about rent burdened households and that's only going to get worse every time you give money away that you shouldn't really have to give away to begin with, in my opinion. Now, with reference to a previous speaker who talked about public records, the way that Yamhill County runs public records is like a profit center. This burdensome and oppressive structure for fees has got to end. We don't need to pay the attorney $100 an hour to check things and to redact things. I mean, if you're gonna be honest about it, just say, you want a public record? Give us a blank check because it becomes burdensome and oppressive for anybody to get public records that are already there. Now, sure, you can charge a fee, but if I come from a jurisdiction that has money far more than this county will ever see in maybe 50,000 generations, if they only charge $5 or a CD, the cost of a CD to put it electronically on it, I don't want to hear attorneys telling people, well, we're gonna charge $100 bucks an hour, $68 an hour for planning or what have you. I, that has to change. Now, with reference to tax relief also is, I want you to light a fire underneath the assessors behind. I mean, there's quite a few EFU related properties out here that have been scamming this county and this state for years and that has to come to an end. And he started doing it this year, but there's several properties in my neck of the woods that have been derelict for at least 10 years and this is money owed, justifiably owed to you, the county and to the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
So we'll move on to item B, the consent agenda, which is, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam, I'll make, Chair, I'll make a motion based on our conversation Tuesday that we approve the consent agenda as it stands.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion?
We don't need a second.
Right?
No.
No further discussion for me, thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Onto item C, old business, we have none. Item D1, which is the consideration of the Board of Commissioners' election of officers. And typically, this is the time where we are required to move, in our county, the chair rotates. The position of Chair of the Board rotates every year. So this is the, the point at which the chair now will rotate to the vice chair and that is Commissioner Olson will now become the chair. We do have to discuss the vice chair, seeing as we have a new commissioner and the vice chair typically would not go to a new commissioner because you're then asking a new commissioner to chair meetings and when the, it's a little bit early in the game. So, do we have a motion to, how do we want to handle this?
Madam Chair, I just want to make one comment and I was a little bit confused, so I looked this up and excuse me for a minute in the, in our policy manual and it basically says that the, if I can find it here, that the actual, even, even the, we, it is customary that we rotate, but it does say in our policy manual that it is elected. It's not a rotated type position, but you are right. It is customary that we usually vote from vice chair to chair.
No, we will have a vote. I was just saying-
Yes, we will have, we will have a vote. So, as the, I think we need to first vote, if it's customary, we have to vote on the vice chair.
Chair.
And then I believe then we vote on the vice chair. It's two separate actions?
Two separate actions.
Okay.
So let's start at this point and do I have a motion to, to nominate Commissioner Olson for the chair, position of the chair?
We have a motion.
Okay, so Commissioner Kula has made a motion to, to nominate Commissioner Olson for the position of chair. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. So now we'll move on to the consideration of the vice chair position and do we have a motion at this point?
Yes. This is a tough one, tough one for me because with the way the, our elections are held where we elect officers every two years, the, I think it makes sense, a first year commissioner is so heavily involved in learning everything and by the time you hit the second year, then I think you're ready to be the vice, you're ready to take on the vice chair. That being, that being said, I think it makes sense and then, my only question is, it goes back to what you brought up earlier, is the chair, normally we rotate the vice chair to the chair, but we don't have to rotate the vice chair to the chair. And so I know this is my third year and, and that now that I'm chair for three years, which I don't have an issue because those first two years were really busy. I think my only comment would be, I'd really like to see Casey be elected to vice, vice chair, but I think he's gonna be so busy, it makes sense to have you rotate back to the vice, vice chair and then next year, after two years, that Casey would become the chair if he's new commissioner. We don't know if one of us is gonna resign, if we're gonna have another new commissioner in two years when I have to run again, so, so that's my, that's my only comment. And I, I'm really concerned because I know you, you have been, you know, you went from the chair to the vice chair, to the chair to the vice chair and this would put you back to the vice chair again, so it does, it really, I, I think I would like to have both of you weigh in, weigh in on that and what you both think about.
So Commissioner, would you like to make a motion and then you could have the discussion?
Sure. So, do you want to make a motion, Commissioner?
Okay, I'd make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Sterrett as the vice chair.
Okay, we have a motion by Chair Olson to appoint Commissioner Sterrett as the vice chair. Any further discussion? And I like to say that what we've seen in the past is, it really is commensurate with what the situation is. For instance, we had a commissioner, when I first came on six months early, four and a half years ago, who kept the position of chair for an extra six months because we had that changing of the guard. So there really is, I think it, it's, there's, the rhyme and reason is, first of all, let's, let's be honest, the position of chair in this county is procedural in terms of running meetings. That you, we don't have any more weight associated whether we get to get a vote and there's, there's no difference other than you're running a meeting, which can be complicated sometimes. So we really don't have to move it this way or that way. We'll do what makes sense based on who's where and it was all just to make sure that a new commissioner wasn't getting just overloaded with, now you have to learn how to run a meeting because my understanding is you're not here on Tuesday, this is coming Tuesday, right? Are you here on the 15th?
That's the Mass Timber Summit, I believe.
So you're gone?
So I, if that's the Mass Timber Summit, yes.
So then that would mean that Commissioner Kula would have to run informal and-
He's never ran a meeting before.
That's kind of unfair. So anyway, that's just, I'm just weighing in on that.
I'd like to hear your comments, Casey.
Good. I was gonna give them even if you didn't want to hear them. Are you also holding in? You're awake? Okay, we have to do our procedural things, but we'll get to comments and I really appreciate everybody in the audience. Sorry. I, I totally recognize your comments. I think that they're, they are all accurate and I also would like to be vice chair. I really love the avalanche of information that comes with this position, so that's, that's my weighing in, but I also really recognize, I, I almost want to continue the rotation as much because we have it, we have, you know, Ordinance 900 that governs our procedures, but I also recognize in the reality that you are going to be a much more effective vice chair than I am.
And these are not things that can't be changed at any point. It's, and I have no attachment to it, to be perfectly honest. It's, it's someone who's running a meeting, so.
Well, just one more thing I'll follow. The way I would prefer to do, I mean, but it's not in our board, we'd have to change our board ordinance, is I believe that any one of us, whether, when you have a chair and a vice chair or another commissioner, that if the, let's say if anyone, if, if Mary's gone and it's set up so the vice chair, one of the vice chairs or chairs would always be here because you have to have two commissioners to have a meeting anyway and, but I would, it's my intent and I hope that during the coming year, as part of the training, that we have an opportunity for not just the vice chair, but if we're all, all three of us here, that Commissioner Kula can have the opportunity to run a couple of meetings to give him some of that. So when he becomes chair, he's already used to running meetings and I don't see anything in our procedural manual that doesn't preclude doing that, so.
Well, that sounds good to me. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm very comfortable with that.
Yeah, that being said, I, I would recommend Commissioner Sterrett. It would be my intent that during the year as chair to, with approval of the board, to allow Commissioner Kula to run some of the meetings, so.
Makes sense.
And how about this? I, I want to make sure especially that chair continues to rotate through, so I would be interested in running for chair next year with Commissioner Sterrett as vice chair this year. So just to put that out there.
Yeah, that could be done, we can do that same when Mary came in six months.
Because it's, you had mentioned that, that was possible, so.
Yeah, you can write, yeah, you can write, it doesn't state it just as election of officer, so certainly you could be chair next year and not go to the vice chair, I suppose.
And, and I, I think we should take one year at a time.
Yeah, I do too. So we don't know who's gonna be here next year.
You just don't know, so.
So that I will, I will restate my motion that we elect Commissioner Sterrett as vice chair.
And you're the chair, so you gotta do this.
Well, I made the motion.
You made the motion.
All right, so we have, so we have a motion, we have a motion to, for Commissioner Sterrett to be the vice chair and then-
And so I'll call for the vote.
Further discussion? We've already had that.
We already had it for the discussion.
So, I made the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Let it show that for 2019, the board, the Commissioner Olson, myself will be the chair and Commissioner Sterrett will be the vice chair.
And there's all your-
Oh, I forgot I got to take all this stuff to go with it, too.
And there's your public hearing and-
I feel like we should clap. I'm gonna clap. Yay! We made it through that. And I, until very recently was out there in the audience, so I just wanted you to know that the reason why we have to do this right here is that we can't talk to each other in private about these things. So you get to watch us doing this, just to, so you know.
Okay, thank you.
So we're on to D2.
Yes, I would, I would like to take this moment though to thank Commissioner Sterrett for the excellent job she did as chair last, last year and as she stated, I'm sure as a Board of Commissioners, you know, it's just a matter of running a program. We all have an equal say and we'll all continue to act as a team with that equal say, so Mary, thank you for the job you did last year.
And I want to say something, thank you too, because I was out in the audience for lots of meetings where I watched you run the meeting and despite comments that minimize it, it's, it's really impressive to watch a well-run meeting, so.
It really is. Remember.
Thank you. With that?
Well, so that as Chair, then I'll go ahead and continue the meeting. We have item number D, which is, we've covered number one, which is the consideration of the Board of Commissioners' election of officers. That takes us to item number two and that's a consideration of adopting Resolution 1901-10-1, proclaiming January 20th through January 26, 2019 as School Choice Week. Would anybody like to make comments? Mary, you'd like to make comments on that?
I make a motion that we adopt this resolution as we have pretty much every year to support the variety of different options for educating children in our county.
Okay, thank you very much, Mary. So we do have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1901-10-1, proclaiming January 26th through, or January 20th through 26, 2019 as School Choice Week. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
We need some further discussion.
Further discussion.
Further discussion.
If I could say, we also historically have always read the resolution into the record before the board takes action on it.
Okay, let me get to the resolution.
Do we read it into the record before discussion?
Yes.
So handy having you right there.
Okay, I'll read the resolution into the record and this is, whereas all children in Yamhill County should have access to the highest quality education possible and whereas Yamhill County recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Yamhill County to be successful adults and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Yamhill County and whereas Yamhill County is home to a multiple of high, high-quality public schools and non-public schools from which the parents can choose for their children in addition to families who educate their children in their home and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy but also enhances the vibrancy of our community and whereas Yamhill County has many high-quality tech teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of January 20th through January 26th as national, as Yamhill County School Choice Week in Yamhill County and is doing so encourages all citizens of Yamhill County to call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. So on Yamhill County Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
So any more discussion?
I wanted to provide some comments.
Sure.
I'm the parent of two homeschool children and so I really value how in Oregon we have a lot of independence as parents and where we can send our children. I really, really appreciate that. We're raising two children who know all about the natural world around them and we, because our family feels that's really important. However, I have a concern about National School Choice Week. I, I almost, I disagree with almost nothing in the proclamation, which is funny then to be having objections to it, but the, the financial backing for National School Choice Week comes from very partisan individuals with lots of money. They also come from our Secretary of Education, from her own funding, Betsy DeVos. I'm uncomfortable with our county joining into that proclamation and so I asked some folks out there in the education community about what they thought and the most compelling to me was testimony from Brady Shields, a senior at McMinnville High School, who I believe is the editor of the paper, the Bruin, I think. And he says, and he, he agreed to let me use this, "School Choice Week doesn't mean school choice for everyone. With school choice, schools that receive public funds can have no public oversight and are likely to lack resources that allow students to succeed, such as English language programs for students who are non-native speakers, special education interventions for students with disabilities." Sorry, I'm still learning how to use a computer. Title I intervention programs in high poverty schools. A voucher system will allow for the wealthy to funnel their money away from high poverty schools, which would leave high poverty schools in worse condition than their current condition. Along with the lack of resources, these schools without public oversight that receive public funding are known to bypass Title IX regulations, which protect students on the basis of gender identity, sex, religion, race, origin, sexual orientation, ethnicity and disability. We cannot allow a lack of Title IX regulations when we have students in Yamhill County of all different backgrounds. The current Secretary of Education is behind the school choice initiative to which she has great financial ties. It's not- It's not productive to proclaim an entire week in favor of a movement that tends to mislead with great support from corporations and lobbyists, along with betraying the diversity of Yamhill County. Yamhill County students deserve better than a Board of Commissioners." Well, this, so these are his words. "That betrays them for the gain of lobbyists, corporations, and exclusionary institutions that have no interest in our education. Do not proclaim National School Choice Week. We deserve something better than such a misleading proclamation," end quote. So I want to make sure that it's clear to you that this is from a high school student and not from me, but this is one of many comments that I received in the past 48 hours with concerns about public education and the diminution of resources for it. And so while I really support the ability for parents to make choices for the children that are appropriate, both to their needs and to the needs of the children, I'm uncomfortable with proclaiming. And I know that everybody's done it all the way along, but I, I was uncomfortable, so. Those are my comments.
I just want to add, it's interesting comments coming from someone who's chosen not to put their kids in government schools.
I know.
But let me just add that this proclamation, what it does, and statistics will show that, that children, minority children will excel when they are put in one of these several options, homeschooling as opposed to public education. That being said, what we're doing is, what we're saying is, we are supporting parents' choice, the ability to make the decision for your own family, as such as you have done.
Right.
And there are public charter schools, there are magnet schools, there are private schools, there's online learning, which is sponsored by the state of Oregon. There's homeschooling, as you know. There's tips for choosing a school. There's a variety of different traditional public schools and non-traditional public schools. What we are saying is, we support the rights of encouraging people to look into all the options out there and not tell them that they have to fit into one particular mold. So the reason why this, every county is, is asked to do this is to allow people to make that decision. And I think we do our, our, our parents and our children a disservice by not encouraging them to look at all the options. That is why I would support this proclamation, as I have for the last four years.
I, you know, and I definitely appreciate Commissioner Kula bringing that, especially from a student, student. And I've worked with that student, who's the editor of the Bruin several other times, but I do on this one have to agree with Mary. When I read, when I read this and first looked at it, I didn't think it was about whether the program was good or bad, but about, like you said, providing parents the options of what they want to do for their students, like you decide to homeschool yours. So therefore, last year I support, I supported this and I'll, I'll continue to support. But I think Commissioner Kula brings up a lot of really good points about the program, so.
So I'm going to call for the vote.
Okay.
Wait, before we do that, can I thank you? Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, so we, we have Commissioner Starrett's call for votes. So all those in favor of supporting this proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Let it, for the record, let it show that Commissioner Olson and Commissioner Starrett voted to approve the proclamation and Commissioner Kula voted to not approve the proclamation. Thank you, Casey and Mary.
Thank you both. I love this discussion thing, by the way. So thank you for taking it off of the consent agenda, so we could talk about it.
No problem. So that leaves us to item number three, and we, we will get to some, we do have a request for some public testimony, so we'll get to that. But this is for Consideration McMinnville Area Habitat Humanities Request to Redirect the $10,000 Approved for 2018-19 Veterans Build to the 2019 Women's Build. And I believe we do have somebody who'd like to comment this. And again, this would be David, David Walsh. So David, if you want to come forward. And once again, since it's a Denver item, say your name and your address. You know the.
It hasn't changed, but my name is still David S. Walsh, PO Box 756, Newburgh, Oregon 97132. I do not approve of such an expenditure for the following reasons. One, the revenue source for this expenditure has not been identified, at least to me. And this gets back to demystifying the overall budget, which is another issue for another day. Now, it gets back to two. I don't want my property tax money going for nonprofits that do this type of work, period. I don't care what nonprofit they are, I don't want to pay for it. Now, that does not mean that they can't get money from corporation donations or third-party donations or anything of that sort. But I'm not just picking on Habitat for this program. I mean, all of this giving away money. You know, Commissioner Starrett, you campaigned about reducing taxes. Well, this $10,000 bucks is $10,000 bucks. And what I've seen, whenever a nonprofit gets their hooks into a government agency, those hooks never come out. And I want to stop it before it starts. And I, I even, you know, not raising my hand against vets, because my father is a 32-year vet. But I was discussing with him and he said the same thing. No, you don't give taxpayer money for this type of housing. Housing, period. I don't even like the Housing Department. That's another matter. And so with that, I'll leave it at that, because remember, Oregon, I thought California was screwed up. Oregon is orders of magnitude worse with this Byzantine tax structure. Now, with this compounding aspect, you're going to be creating more and more burden upon people that have to rent each time you give out money like this. You can, you're doing that. And it's only going to get worse. It's not going to get any better. Well, it could get better, but that's another story. But until then, my opinion is, don't go forward with this. I don't want my money spent that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you.
So I don't have anybody else scheduled to provide comment on the decision. So I'll bring it back to the board for discuss, well, first of all, I guess we'd want to take a vote on it and then, then discuss it.
We need a motion.
We have a, I need a motion. We have a motion for Consideration McMinnville Area Habitat for Humanities Request to Redirect the $10,000 Approved for the 2018-2019 Veterans Build to the 2019 MAC Habitat Women's Build Project. So we do have a motion. I'll open it up for discussion.
We don't have a motion, do we?
I don't know.
No, I will.
Is that, is that your motion?
That was my motion. I just made the motion.
Okay. I'd like to say, as I, as I mentioned on Tuesday, I know that we had this discussion regarding the fact that we have already expended these funds for veteran, specifically for veterans. And if there was a concern about finding veterans that were suitable to take it and then to just redirect it, I don't think that was the spirit of our support for veterans. So I would not be inclined to, to approve it for another particular project.
Okay. Commissioner Kula?
Since I was not here, or I was, I actually was present when you decided, but I wasn't the one who was involved in that decision. I feel comfortable with going with your rationale. However, I would be interested in having MAC Area Habitat for Humanity give us a presentation about the Women's Build Program so that we can specifically make a decision about providing them with $10,000 for the Women's Build Program. Because to me, if we're not, if we're, we don't want it redirected specifically for that because we intended to take it to veterans, then I think that it's perfectly reasonable to say, like, tell us about the Women's Build Program, why it's so valuable, and how we can help you with that.
See, this is something that would be done during the budget process.
That's what I was remembering.
And that's what we, what, basically the nonprofits were coming and saying, would you be able to help us with a grant?
Yeah.
And that's the time that they come and do that.
That's right.
And that would be appropriate for this particular project.
Yeah, and I'm really interested in hearing that, so.
Okay, I guess my comment on it is, I have to go along with Commissioner Starrett. When we, when we bring Commissioner Kula, when we approve this for the veterans, be expanded for the veterans, it was for a specific item. That was the need for housing for, for a needy veteran family. And I don't believe it's keeping in the spirit of that to just transfer it to the Women's Build Project. So I'm in total compliance. So that being said, we have a motion that was made for the consideration of the McMinnville Area Habitat for Humanity request. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Oh, no, wait. Sorry about that.
Yeah, retract that.
Let's hear that. Can we hear that again?
Oh, sorry about that. No, that's fine. I, I, go ahead.
Okay, all those opposed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show that for item number three, Consideration McMinnville Area Habitat for Humanities Request to Redirect the $10,000 has been defeated unanimously by Commissioner Starrett, Commissioner Kula, and Commissioner Olson. Okay, that takes us to the next thing on, and this is an agreement, item number four, consideration of agreement between Public Works and WHP Pacific Incorporated Consulting Engineering Services for the Stag Hollow Creek Loughlin Bridge Replacement Project. So I think what I'll first do is ask John, our Public Works Director, to come up. And Bill, if you want to come up with him, if you guys want to talk a little bit about this. Get all your wires and all your tubes and everything up there with you, John.
Item pros, Commissioner, up here.
Don't cross your wires. Thank you for your patience, everybody, that's out there.
Commissioners, this is a project that we actually started about seven years ago, and this is the Loughlin Bridge. WH Pacific was the engineering firm that we had chosen at that time to do the preliminary, excuse me, the preliminary drawings. And at that time, we had to acquire some land, and so they, they walked us through that. So what we're proposing now, rather than go out for an RFP and get an engineering firm to redesign this, because some federal, some federal different, how would you say that?
The building codes.
Structural codes have changed, so we do have to have some of the bridge redesigned. WH Pacific will be able to step up right now. If we were not able to do this, we'd have to go out for an RFP, which would be three to four months by the time we had that done. Our hopes right now is for Loughlin Bridge's construction to be done this summer. That would lessen the burden on the, the public out there as far as traveling. I believe Christian has looked at this agreement and being under $100,000 has agreed that we could go forward with it legally.
Yeah, that's correct. For these kind of agreements, if it's below $100,000, we can direct a point. And as John mentioned, they were the contractor previously. I believe it would take significantly longer and probably cost more if we were to have a different firm come in and have to review everything that WH Pacific already did and then continue forward with the, with the final design and engineering work. I did want to make one other comment. There's a slight change to the agreement that was in the packet earlier. At the request of the contractor and following discussions with Public Works, we removed the language in Provision 5, which provided for a potential penalty for the contractor and provided for liquidated damages if they failed to complete the work by the completion date set forth in the contract. It's a standard provision that we often use, but in this situation, given the, the need to get it done quickly, the assistance they're able to provide us by having been the contractors before, and after talking with Bill about this, if they were to fall behind slightly, it's not as critical as it, as it, as it might be. And again, using them is saving us several months of time to begin with, so we have a little bit of flexibility in the schedule. And so at, at the request of the contractor and with the support of Public Works, we went ahead and removed that provision from the contract. There was also a slight reduction in the price. The total price is now $95,394, which is down from, I believe it was $97,000 to $98,000. So slight additional cost-saving there. And with that in mind, we're still finalizing the, the agreement with the contractor. I don't believe there will be any other material revisions to the agreement. So with that, I would ask if the board could approve this subject to the final review and approval of County Council's office. I believe we expect to have the contractors signature in the next day or two. This would allow the work to begin before having to wait for another week.
Okay, Christian, I have one question.
Yeah.
And in the, what's in the packet, number five, is, is that the reason it's shown as just reserved and not removed, so everything doesn't have to be renumbered below that?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, John or Bill?
Yes, Commissioner Olson, this you need to be aware of was not a budgeted expenditure for the year, but I do feel that we do have monies from other line items that will be able to do this, this fiscal year.
Okay, thanks, John. Bill, you have anything you'd like to add?
Just that this bridge is a priority for the department and for the neighborhood. We went through a load rating procedure earlier in 2018, and we're able to do some emergency repairs. We've got the load rating kind of softened, so we're up to 20 tons now, which allows a lot of emergency response and empty trucks. So loaded trucks still have an issue using this bridge, but we've done what we can with the existing structure. We need to move forward with a new bridge. John and I have worked over the last several years with the state to acquire some, basically, used bridge slabs from ODOT, which we had hoped would be free, but that there is a minimal charge that ODOT will charge us. But still much less than, than us going out and, you know, buying new ones. So we've kind of worked this as well as we can to get us a new, good bridge at a minimal cost.
John, once, once we start construction on this, given if we get this signed and they do the rest of the engineering, final engineering, we start, as you said, hopefully start construction this summer, what kind of closure, how long of a closure will we be looking at for Loughlin Road at the bridge?
Commissioner, it's going to be a six-month minimum.
It's going to be about six months?
It's actually a four-mile detour from the bridge to, for the residents living next to the bridge.
And I take it emergency services, Yamhill Road Fire, they didn't, I mean, they understand they didn't have any difficulty, I mean, there's not a lot we can do about closing it.
No, and Commissioner, we'll talk with them. You know, on the De Young Bridge, we rectified that by stage in the emergency equipment on the other side of the bridge.
Side of the bridge, okay.
And that might be an option, too.
Okay, thanks, thanks. Thanks, John. So, Bill, you have anything else?
Well, the whole construction project is, yes, six months. That actual physical closure, we can probably stage and, and schedule for a much tighter timeframe.
That'd be great.
You know, we've got a full concrete, it's got cure, so, but that timeframe can be compressed, so it's not the full six months, but there will be a closure. There's no way to avoid it.
And the bridge is, is going to be somewhat parallel to the old bridge, but is it, we, do we have to close it because they're going to run into each other, as it were?
Yeah, the, the new bridge will be over the existing location.
Okay.
It'll be a longer and wider bridge. But we did buy some additional right-of-way, but not enough to have the existing and the new.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate your thinking about the residents when you do closures, and so thank you for that. One other question that I had about it was, John, can you explain how it works from going from an under-20-foot bridge to an over-20-foot bridge and the, the details of maintenance and ownership?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Because I didn't really understand the last time we talked, but I felt like some people in the background, behind you, might want to know.
Right now, it is under 20 feet. So the bridge right now falls completely on Yamhill County as far as maintenance, replacement, and so on. These new beams that Bill was talking about are 60 feet long. So obviously, the new bridge is going to be 60 feet long. We have to build it, what I refer to, to federal standards now because of, this will become a bridge that the state, the state will be responsible for the total cost if that bridge needs to be replaced, minus 10.27% right now. Right now, if we have a bridge over 20 feet, we're pretty much directed by the state what to do and what not to do as far as repairs. De Young Bridge is a prime example now. The state is managing that program. They, they put it out to bid. They put it out to bid, they did the engineering and so forth on that bridge. We will have to pay 10.27% of the total cost of that bridge. Loughlin Bridge will fall into that same category once it's constructed as a 60-foot.
And so it's repairs, but not maintenance? We still will be paying for maintenance on it, correct? Or Bill's nodding, but maybe you know, you understand my question, I don't know.
Once it becomes 60-foot, we'll pay for the routine maintenance.
The routine maintenance of it.
But any structural repair, structured deficiencies, then the federal, the state comes in and we pay our percentage of it.
Correct, Mr. Olson, yes. When at 50 years from now or 60 years from now, when the deficiency of the state, if the agreements are still in place.
Right.
Will be on the hook for 90% of the cost of rehabbing the bridge.
Okay.
Very good.
And then I asked Director Phelan about, is there a way to move this forward faster? And he explained that this is fast.
This is fast.
And you're smiling, so you understand as well. But I wanted to note that you also talked about how, because it's a longer bridge, there's no in-stream work that needs to be done, so we can get started earlier. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, the in-stream work on that stream, I'm not, it changes from stream to stream, frankly.
Yeah.
But yes, with the 60-foot span, we will be out of the in-water work period.
Okay, so that is a big benefit.
We will be able to work out of the in-water work.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, both of you.
Okay, so Mary, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, so therefore I'll entertain a motion that we consider approving the agreement between Public Works and WHS Pacific.
So moved.
So we have moved by Commissioner Sterrett.
And Mr. Chair, again, subject to the final review and approval of our office.
Subject to the additional changes that have, once it's reviewed by a legal counsel. Okay, that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Since there isn't any, I will let the record show that the Commissioner, Commissioner Sterrett, Commissioner Kula, and Commissioner Olson all unanimously approved the agreement with WH Pacific. So John, Bill, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, everybody.
I had a meeting at the chamber, and I sent Carrie out. Do they, are they getting out?
Keep healing, John. Keep healing. I should say that more clearly, it sounded funny.
Okay, the next thing on our, the next thing on our agenda, we'll move to the next category, and the next category is public hearings. We do have a public hearing, a meeting to accept public comment on permit for two gates on, along, and across High Heaven Road, and I want to note that this is a legislative-type public hearing, so we will not be following the order of the public hearing. You here up there, so, and I should put the gavel over here? So Christian, I can just go ahead and open the public hearing? Okay, I'll open the public meeting regarding receipt of public comment on permits of two gates along, across, and across High Heaven Road, and basically we'll just start with comments. And since this is legislative, and there is really no order to take the proponents, I'm just going to read them off in the order they were given, given to me, and let you come comment. So the first one is Tony Wade, so Tony, if you can come up and state your address, please, for the record.
Tony Moat.
Oh, it looks like, it looks like Wade, Tony Moat, then. Tony, come on up and state your address, sorry.
My name's Tony Moat, and I'm at 6200 Northwest High Heaven Road. I'm opposing to opening any of the gates up there. Traffic already is pretty intense, and the road condition is quite terrible. It seems like the last three years, it's been very minimally taken care of. I've already had to replace in the last year three axles and a couple struts. I would like to see if the residents from Willis on up, Willis Road going up to High Heaven towards the end, could get possibly a key during fire season. We've had an RV on fire, we've had a couple fires back behind us, so that's one of my biggest concerns. Yeah, allowing, we already have enough traffic going up in the middle of the night, it would just increase. I have two kids, I already worry about them, about getting ran over, so that's pretty much what I have to say. Now, it'd increase homeless going up there, we've already had people try to live up there, so that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you, Tony. We'll go ahead and let's have, this is a second, Kimberly Ringer. Come up and state your name and address for the record, please, Kimberly.
My name's Kimberly Ringer, and I live at 6200 Northwest High Heaven Road. Can I get my water?
Certainly.
What was the voice from today? So we didn't become aware of this until night before last, when we seen it in the paper. And unfortunately, after work last night, we had a holiday party, so I'm not super prepared, but I did write something, so hopefully it's okay that I just read off in my paper.
Certainly.
Okay. So like I said, my name's Kimberly Ringer, this is my husband, Michael Ringer. We have lived on High Heaven for over a decade, and we would hate to see these gates removed. A lot of what I'm referring to in this, I wasn't sure how this whole thing works, but is the article that I read regarding my neighbor, Mary. So when I refer to that, that's what I'm referring to, is the article in the newspaper. Not long after we purchased our home, I met Joe Keine, a longtime resident. We were talking about the history of High Heaven, and it wasn't always such a peaceful place. Joe told me, before the gates were installed, High Heaven was like a highway. It was a party and dumping place. Joe would have people all hours of the night knocking on his door because they ran out of gas or needed to use the phone to call for some kind of help. Even to this day, when I give out my address, like at different things, you know, you're applying for things or doctors, whatever, when I give out my address, the first response is, "We used to party so hard up there." My response is, "Yep, that's what I hear, good thing the gates are there." The fire hazard that would be created by removing the gates due to people having campfires, off-roading, ATVs, shooting, and dumping is far more concerning than any emergency that currently happens on High Heaven. Our amazing fire and police departments can respond quickly. We don't believe this would be the case, this would be, we don't believe it would be the same way up the road with no phone service. The only big fire since we've lived there that I'm aware of was on July 4, 2016. I received a call from my neighbor, Mary. She said, "Do we need to evacuate?" I said, "I don't know what you're talking about." Mary said, "Where are you?" I said, "We're headed to Evergreen to go watch the fireworks." She responded with, "Your house is on fire." I looked at my husband who was driving, and I said, "Our house is on fire." And we started flying home. We were down on Lafayette Avenue at the time, and I was so thankful that Mary had called, and I said, "Please, like, go open the gates, let our animals out," like, we were freaking out. So as we're flying down Baker Creek Road, we could see just a huge cloud of black smoke rising from where our home would be. We were fearing the worst. When we got to our house, the firefighters not only had beat us up the road, which living on gravel for a long time, you drive probably a little too fast on it, but they had already got the fire out. And thankfully, it was not our home that was on fire, it was a truck that was pulling in a trailer that caught fire at the bottom of our driveway. That, when she was looking from her home, is where our house sat, so that's why she thought it was our home. But regardless, we're super thankful that they got up there. We have the utmost confidence and respect for McMinnville Fire Department. Lastly, I think it's important to note that Mary Bryant will not have to deal with the consequences of removing the gates, because her home is currently on the market for sale. The people that are going to have to deal with it are the people that are choosing to still live up there, and that have lived there for a really long time. Ourself, since several other neighbors that I've spoken to, do not believe that any good will come by removing the gates. We ask that you please do not take away our peaceful slice of heaven. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll call for, let's see, next one I have on the list is David Wall, so David, come on up.
David, you were shaking your head, was that part of your testimony?
No, this is on the gate, this is a different one. William's David Wall, P.O., Box 756, Newburgh, Oregon, 97132. I do not live at High Heaven Road, obviously. However, I got lost up there once, but that was due to my own ignorance and negligence. What I want to talk about affects all roads in the county. Now, there has, I think, over the years, the rural population has changed than it was 17, 20 years ago. There's far more people in the back country, so to speak. And we never know when there's going to be a forest fire. You just don't know it. And if there's ingress and egress issues on public roads that are barred from being able to be used to escape, that's really reckless indifference or a callous disregard for public safety. Now, I appreciate, to the highest levels, everybody that wants a gate on their road, they have a good reason. These drug people, trash, vehicular lawlessness, nobody wants that in any neighborhood. And I can understand it and support it, but we have to first take an inventory of all county roads and come up with a policy on how gated roads, on public roads, using the appropriate ORS regulation, can be amenable to everybody. Now, I would think it'd be reasonable that everybody have a key up there to that gate, okay, anybody that lives up there, just to get in and out, but then again, what about the third party that you don't know that's just up there like me, ignorant as a jaybird, gets lost, and then there's a forest fire, and I'm precluded because I don't have a key? And yet it's a public road that I'm paying taxes for out of my property taxes to be able to use without any encumbrances due to the whims or wishes of people that live around there or adjacent property owners. Now, the property or the permit initially from Willamette Industries should be an issue here to look at the conditions of the original permit, and to see why it was transferred without the slightest blink of an eye to Warehouser. And of course, the misreporting by the accursed news register saying it's just a logging road, it is a public road, used primarily, possibly for logging, and/or other purposes that the previous speaker mentioned, and which are not appropriate. Drugs going up there, just shooting left and right, nobody wants that promiscuous shooting up there. So whenever you substitute convenience and or expediency for your lawmaking, you give license to injustice, and so I think you should tread very cautiously here about gating public roads. And I think you'll be well-served by hearing people talk about it, and of course, remembering that the rural back country has changed. And also, all of you are part of this, and I, forgive me, I don't know the actual, I don't remember the actual name of this coalition of law enforcement people, but Yamhill County is no longer a rural county by this, this huge inter-county meeting or group. The law enforcement is Lipsits, whatever.
Lipsits, LPS, Local Public Safety Coordinating.
That's it, right there.
It's no longer considered a rural county.
And you were the only one that was there by email. I don't know why the other commissioner wasn't there, but nonetheless.
Mr. Wall, let me just say, the reason why the other commissioner was here, and I'm going to take umbrage to that, is all the commissioners used to go, Commissioner Primisic, myself, and Commissioner Olson used to be there.
I know, I see the nameplates.
They changed the setup to where there was one voting commissioner. Since I would often have a conflict with that meeting occurring on another meeting, the voting member was the one who was attending, and the other members were not often in attendance, since we were not able to vote. So just wanted to, for the record.
Well, your umbrage should stretch into the district attorney's office, because they have several members, and they all seem to get to vote, so I think they've shortchanged it. But nonetheless, the big issue out of this last meeting was the fact that Yamhill County is no longer a rural or frontier county, it is considered an urban county. And that was discussed, to my amazement, an urban county means a whole lot of different things with reference to who's having on our property taxes, primarily the OSU Extension Office, because it's a whole different ballgame now. So with all that, take into consideration about public roads. These are public roads, not private roads. And if you want to make them private, people can pay a fee to buy the private necessary aspects of the road, considering that the property owner owns halfway to the midsection of the center line of the road by Oregon law.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Wall.
Thank you.
Okay, John Demay. John? And again, if you would enter, state your name and your address for the record, please.
John Demay, 21,000 Northwest Baker Creek, McMinnville. Thank you for having this hearing. I don't personally have a long history with the High Heaven Gate. I do live up at far end of Baker Creek, so I'm more than familiar with the tales of the people coming down in the middle of the night, who's put their car in the ditch and so forth and so on. And I also should, for honesty, tell you that it's nicer there now that Warehouser has put a gate on Baker Creek. That's a different circumstance, it's not a public road where, well, I think Warehouser did not put that gate there believing that it was a public road, and we could debate it, but it certainly isn't like High Heaven, that is a public road. So I got interested reading the newspaper and just started doing some reading. Came to a meeting, your work session, a while back. So I'm just kind of here to report my thoughts, I guess, not an expert on any of this, but my reading tells me that High Heaven, certainly at the time we gated it, it was a county road, it's still a public road. I couldn't find any evidence of any other jurisdiction other than Yamhill County that would gate a public road with a locked gate across the road today like High Heaven has gated. There may be some out there, but I couldn't find them. The ones I could find, that used gates, have passed ordinances about how they use the law that we use, the chapter 368. They've passed criteria, so that they don't have to reinvent the wheel every time someone comes to them with a request to gate a road. Because the ordinance itself, 360, under 368, is vague. It doesn't really have good, specific criteria as to what you folks should do. Pre-1981, it did have, it was specific. In 1981, for some reason, I would say some mischief maker made it less clear, for what motive, I don't know, but they redid that whole chapter, I believe, in 81.
This is the statute, right?
Yeah, this is the statute.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, chapter three, yeah. So the statute doesn't really tell us now. Pre-1981, it was clear that you couldn't put a gate across a road. The gates they were talking about were along the road, the gates were for the cows, not for the cars. The gates were to keep the cows out. State laws, for state highways, the law is still the same today. Pre-81, the county statute, the statute for county roads, the statute for state roads were the same, and both specifically forbid putting gates across public roads. But in 81, that changed for county roads, for some reason that I don't know. And now, it's not, it does not clear. They say a gate on a road, so you have a gate, you know, what's a gate on a road? You know, it not, before, it was either a gate across a road or along a road. Across and along, we kind of know what that means. Now we don't know what it means, it's on a road. So the mischief maker sort of opened it up, and mischief has begun. Meanwhile, the state law assures us that we have the right of use of public roads in several places. It's clear that the public has the right to use public roads. So I guess, I would say, you know, that I've submitted some written testimony, which you have, and it gets specific about which counties do it high, what way, and what their criteria are. It seems to me there's wisdom in that, so that each commission and each staff that It seems to me there's wisdom in that, so that each commission and each staff that, I mean, we're all changed since that road was gated. Now, there's nobody, hardly here, that was there then.
Like the Ulysses.
Except for, yeah. There's some agent wisdom among us.
Maybe Bill Kelly.
You know, somebody's going to come again, and they're going to want a gate. And do you want to do it all, reinvent the wheel all over again? Or do we maybe, while we have this High Heaven issue, do we want to just bear down and do some fact finding and get some opinions from the experts? And make a little ordinance that says, these are going to be the criteria that we're going to use in the future when somebody comes and requests a gate? The kind of criteria that I saw are, is it a dead-end road? Or is there access, does it block, would a gate block access to public roads? Or have all the residents behind the gate, have they all agreed that they want that? So forth and so on. In my own mind, I still don't know whether the use of that statute, which was for a lot of cows, is right for denying the public access to drive on public roads. But it is clear to me that if there were some definitive and conservative criteria about when we put a gate, that would be better than it is today in Yenhill County, where you all have no real criteria. And, you know, I mean, there's traffic on all kinds of roads. I mean, you can't, you know, everybody is, this man said, will have a good reason for his own road. I know, because I live up at the end of Baker Creek, and it's nicer now Warehouser put that gate up there. Well, but, you know, we've got road racing going on over here, and we've got homeless people camping over there. You can't just gate all the problems. You, at some point, have to face the problems and say, what are we going to do about this? And we do have problems. You know, we've got homeless campers, we've got garbage, toxic waste, maybe dumping, we got all kinds of things going on where we don't have good patrol. Warehouser has solved some of those problems for us in my area, for better or for worse, because they gated a lot of roads. But High Heaven is the exception. It's a public road. These other roads have been gated. The numbers aren't going up there, for the time being at least. High Heaven is a public road. They have, by the way, security people up there that, you know, you'll probably find and hear stories of, if you ask, you know, people who've gone up there, biked up there, whatever, they encounter the Warehouser security people. So I think maybe if that gate were open, dumping might not be the problem that it used to be, because I talked to a man yesterday who was stopped just for bike riding up there by Warehouser security person. So that, I guess that's along the shore, but I don't want to deprive other people too much. I've got one final thought I want to mention, though. What really caught my attention here was when I talked to Mary Bryant, who, now, I'm not, this is not a version of events, this is my impression of what I thought I heard. What I thought I heard was a lady who came to the county with a problem, and she wasn't offered help, she was treated like she was the problem. We kind of circled the wagons on her and took ownership of that locked gate in a way that really wasn't, you know, it's 17 years it's been there, you know. As government servants, and I know that I'm not, nobody did this personally, individually, what my fear is, that this was a sort of an institutional reaction. I've managed an organization myself, and I'm not unacquainted with reacting that way to a complaint. I've done it myself more than once the wrong way. I know how that happens, you know. People want to do their jobs the best way they know how, they want to do a great job, and when somebody comes in and says, hey, that wasn't so great, you know, your first reaction is, maybe, circle the wagons. But, you know, I also know that as servants of, you know, the public, that first reaction is not the best reaction, you know. The complainer who comes in is one of your most valuable resources for improving your service, you know, whatever that complaint is. Number one, your desired outcome for government service is consumer satisfaction. We're not making any widgets or anything. It's like, are those people out there, do they think we're doing a good job? Are they happy? I have been happy in most of my life with Yenhill County and local government in Oregon. I've always felt well-served. So when I heard this story, I thought, my first reaction was, well, no. But I listened again and talked to a couple other people, and I thought, no, I just need to tell these folks that, you know, I mean, first, your complaintant should go away happy, hopefully, but you should also, of course, abstract that information about that complaint that's going to help you improve the whole, the whole thing. So that's kind of my, just my last two cents worth. And as I say, it's an impression for what it's worth, you know. If I piqued your curiosity, maybe you want to call Mary in and just get her story about what it felt like in her moccasins as a person who came, you know, pretty much to the county for help, she might be a complainer now, because she didn't feel she got. But either way, you know, you need to talk to the complainer, too. What did those moccasins feel like? And what's that mean for us as a, you know, a county that wants to service people well? And Commissioner Thayer, I resonated very much with your comments after the swearing in, you know, clearly, your heart is sort of where I think mine is about, you know, wanting to provide the best service we can, you know, each one person at a time. So I hope my comments are of some value. If there is anything you choose to do beyond this, and I can, anybody wants to know about the research I've done, and it didn't get in the testimony, I'd be glad to come in and share the notes I made for the benefit of your order.
Thank you very much, Demme.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Demme, your testimony was very well-taken. So we'll call, let's see, the next one I have, and going through the sheets, is Steve Bryant. So Steve, why don't you come forward?
He didn't have to talk, he just...
Oh, he just wanted to do it. So you want to, that way, what I will do is, I will call you forward, Mary. If Steve doesn't want to come sit with you, he doesn't want to talk, I'll call you forward.
No, he won't be able to make a complaint. No. Mary Bryant, I know the ritual. 6395 Northwest High Heaven Road, McMinnville, Oregon. And I wanted to thank you for speaking on my behalf, on the way I felt I was treated, and I'm glad it came across that way in the paper. Before I talk about what I would like to talk about, I wanted to respond to the neighbor, Kim. I don't recall seeing your house was on fire, but I was very, very afraid. From where I could see, there was explosions, I was outside, plumes of black smoke. My husband, the City of Portland firefighters, in Portland Fire Station, called 911. I was the first person to report it, which is why they came up there so quickly. And then I called her. She gave me information on how to get her pets. So anyway, and that's not the only fire since we've been up there, we've been up there 21 years. My husband's commuted to Portland the entire time. But I just want to mention really quick, I'm assuming the timer's not going off. I noticed that nobody else has been timed, so I'm going to kind of...
This is a public area, so there's really no...
Yay!
You're getting more time.
Not to say a lot, but other people may have said, no.
I'm getting buzzard shy.
You're not subject anytime.
Okay, because I had like the three-minute version, and then I'm going to try to speed it up, but anyway, yay. So anyway, everybody wants a gate. I mean, I would love a gate before my house, after my house. It would be great, you know, there wouldn't be any dust, it would be awesome. But in a perfect world, a public road is a public road. And when this started, just to let everybody know, going up to the gate, the gate at the end of the road was posted. It was posted with the threat of trespass, two different ordinances, and there was a number to call and an email address. And it was a threatening thing, and I couldn't believe it, because I know that that's a public road beyond the gate. So I contacted first the county, who told me very quickly, that's a private road beyond the gate. You cannot go beyond the gate. I talked to that person and said, hey, can you talk to your boss? Can you make sure? Because blah, blah, blah. She talked to him, it's private beyond the gate. He ended up talking to me, why does your husband think it's public beyond the gate? Anyway, this was a big thing back and forth. We waited for the surveyor to come back a week later. Nobody called me back. I called again. Lo and behold, it's public road. So then I went ahead and I emailed Warehouser off the sign posted on the gate, and I asked them, which I provided to the commissioners, today in a packet, as an attachment and previously. And it said, what is the fee to go? Because it said it was a lease area, I said, what's the fee to go beyond the gate, on foot, on horse, on bicycle, or in a car? And I quickly got a response that, sorry, it's a lease area, thanks for inquiry. So that sparked this. In addition, my husband, like I said, that's a firefighter, he's been away nine days when our children were young to forest fires in Levensworth. And he knows, you know, a lot of people, it always happens somewhere else, you know, it happens in California, it happens there, it can happen anywhere. And there was a study done for the county in '09 that explains just how bad our fire load is up there. So when this started, I wanted a key to the gate. I thought of only myself. I want a key to the gate, and I want to be able to get out in case of fire. So now, after going through what I've gone through, and it's been three months, a lot of it not the way I envisioned it to be, when I'm trying to get information on the road, and I didn't realize there was a $25 fee, and then you pay? I've paid the whole time. You know, I have one receipt for $11, and I was told $35 an hour, and they couldn't promise to give me what I wanted at the end of the hour. So I've paid a lot of money. You know, I never knew that the first $25 was free. But anyway, next time. So what I wanted to say was, the original permit that this is all about was for two gates along the road. And if you look at the copy of the permit, and I highlighted it for you, two gates along the road. Three gates went up 21 years ago, roughly, or whatever it was, 19, when we were up there. And two are along the road, and one's acrossed, that I can see. So two along, one across. So I argued that. Why does the permit from '01 say along the road when the gate, one of the gates is across, at least one, right where I can see it? So anyway, and then the hearing today, obviously, it was changed to on, along, or across the road. So anyway, if we're talking about the '01 permit, the '01 permit clearly states along the road. And as far as there being, you know, my children, my kids are 29 and 32, and they were up there younger, and I don't really remember, I remember a car being abandoned, but I remember a boat being abandoned a few weeks ago at the lower part of High Heaven Road. Is there garbage? Sure, the Warehouser just made three spur roads, and there's garbage there, and they could be gated along the road. But to have a through road, this is a unique, unique road. It's a public road to public lands. And if you research how rare that is, and how special that is, to have a public road to public land, it's amazing. And the only thing in between people wanting to use that is this '01 board order. And in my mind, there's been no gate permit until I brought all this up and it was decided to be transferred to Warehouser, knowing that the permit now is totally different than the permit that was given to Willamette. When it was Willamette, we used the road a lot. It wasn't locked and shut all the time. Since Warehouser, the last time we've driven on it was two years ago, my husband. But that being said, and I lost my train of thought, you know, it's just amazing to me that you can gate a road to public land, to BLM land. Where, oh, that's what I was going to say, Warehouser is charging lease fees. It's posted at the gate, I provided copies in the packet off their website. They have certain gates that are open, people pay permits, and there's certain areas that are lease areas where you pay thousands of dollars to lease the area. Nobody can know who the lease area, leaseholder is, or where they live. The paper quoted me as saying they were from out of state. I said, they could be from anywhere. But the point being, they can get firewood 365 days a year, they can make campfires three, well, not 365 days a year, but for the majority of the year, unless it's extreme fire danger. They can shoot guns, they can do this, they can do that. A lease party can be a large party of people. So now, we have a gate that Warehouser's profiting from, because they charge a lease fee to enter the gate, for those select people to be able to use the public road going to the public land. So if you want to go to the BLM land around the mountain, and at certain times of the year, Warehouser also lists on their website certain gates that are open, the Baker Creek gate and the White Gate are different gates. And I didn't look into those roads as being private, public, whatever. I was just looking at one access way out from my house. My husband, when we were talking about it being a fire danger, and joking about having a torch, you know, in case of a fire, we could torch it. Those are heavy gates, you know, it's not something you can just do that with. And on Warehouser's website, a week ago, I looked, and there was a malfunctioning gate that they had sold permit holders access to, but they're saying, whoa, the gate doesn't work, we have a guy coming out next week to fix it, so try to use these other gates. Well, that's my only gate, or my only access out. So that's my two cents, is that when it comes to a public road going to public land, you need to preserve it. And when I look on the internet and I see commissioners in Washington that are fighting for the citizens on private roads to public land, trying to get timber companies, Warehouser, to work with them to let people in, pretty soon, there's not going to be hunting anymore unless you are extremely wealthy and you can afford the exorbitant lease fees. So that's my two cents. I hope, you know, I've been as thorough as I can, I haven't gotten a lot of the information I wanted to get, it was hard for me to get what I do have, but anyway, and I appreciate my husband supporting me, he had surgery Tuesday, and probably doesn't feel like being here, but he came. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, I have one more, and I have Michael Merrich. Come on up, Michael, and skin state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Merrich. I live at 64 Northwest High Heaven Road. All of my fellow neighbors pretty much summed up everything I was going to say, but I'd like to carry on with the maintenance of the road. It's in very bad shape. There have been slides that have reported to the county. They asked me to put up a caution tape, block it off, a third of it went off the hillside. Our road's in no shape to have more traffic. And opening the gate would lead to more traffic, more dumping, more illegal campfires. I came home one night, there was a car on the side of the road, they were out there having a campfire, pitching camp on the side of the road. It does it there, what's going to happen at the end of the road? Dumping the boat, more trash goes up the road farther. But I think taking that gate down would be a really huge mistake.
Okay.
And I rode up in there on my horses. They can call it a public road? It's not. You got to get out of there, you'd probably get yourself stuck, it could cause more problems. Pretty much it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Merrich.
Thank you.
Okay, that's the only country. Somebody else?
I've got a question. I wasn't able to fill this out ahead of time, is there any chance I can?
Yes, you can fill, bring it up, he'll take care of you, they'll take care of you right over there.
And thanks to all of you for showing up for this, too. Appreciate it.
So since you've got yours done, she'll hand me your card, and you can go ahead and have a seat.
My name's Alan Schwartz, I live at 10225 Northwest from Tanna Lane. I just want to comment, for the past 25 years, I've lived in this county and enjoyed all that it has to offer, and spent a lot of time up in the area that's being discussed, both on the Baker Creek roadside and the High Heaven side. I can say that I remember when it was open on High Heaven, and the reason that I heard about it was some guys from Newburgh said, hey, we're going to go dirt biking, and where is that? Oh, up High Heaven. And it was a pretty much a free-for-all up there. And it was a pretty much a free-for-all up there and there was a lot of stuff going on that shouldn't have been going on. The gates that have been put into place have dramatically reduced the litter, the abandoned vehicles, the accidents. The road we're talking about in the wintertime is, as the residents know, is dangerous just all by itself. Now, if you get people that are trying to get up there to get through to somewhere, that's the other thing. Where are they getting through to? I know people are saying it's a public road. You need to go up there and drive that. There's nowhere to get through to. If you want to go down Vaughn Road in the middle of winter and you don't know what you're doing, you, I've seen cars turned over on Baker Creek Road, completely flipped over from kids messing around. There is a 25-foot wooden boat right now, sitting just inside the gate on Baker Creek Road, that somebody chose to dump up there. I call it people's end of the world. So we have people that they go to the end of what is their world and they dump their trash. And I just want to offer this solution. And somebody kind of touched on it earlier, which I thought was, I mean, let's just use common sense. So the gate is providing, I think, a very smart function in keeping, for the taxpayers that live in that area. I mean, the one gentleman even on Baker Creek Road, he said, yeah, it's been a great thing since the gate went in at Baker Creek. If the people from Willis Road up were given a key in case of a fire, that would solve that. That's the only valid argument, I think, about opening that gate. If they were given a key, let's just use common sense. I'm not here to debate the law or all that. They were given a key, they would have a second way out. That problem is solved. Then you don't open yourself up. By opening this gate, you're gonna open yourself up to exponentially more issues. The road is gonna have to be maintained at a much higher level. You're gonna get emergency services up there. You are gonna have danger for fires because people aren't gonna respect it in the summertime. The trash is unbelievable. I'm part of a group of people that enjoy that area up there. And we do trash cleanup. We report the issues that we see. But by removing those gates, I just want to go on record, it's going to cause you 10 times the headaches that you're experiencing right now. And I just want to go on record for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schwartz. Okay, Sean Slovic? Come forward, Sean.
Sean Slovic. My mailing address is P.O. Box 113, Amity Orton. Hi, as am with Alan. Lived here all my life, have recreated in the area. To this day, we recreate two to three times a week in the same area, not necessarily on High Heaven Road or the area. Coming from both sides. I used to work in the timber industry for Ward or Warehouser, or Willamette Industries. They always kept the gates open, you know, during hunting season, things like that, unless they had a log-in outfit, you know, up a spur road. Was totally against the gates, but kind of as time has evolved and our civilization has evolved a little bit, I've seen a lot more homeless people in the area, especially at Baker Creek. As Alan said, there's a 25-foot boat just inside the gate, because the gate was open here, as of a couple of days, weeks ago, Baker Creek. In the middle of the road. It's not on us, the road, it's in the middle of the road. And it has Washington tags on it. Tags are still on it. You know, Warehouser, Warehouser does open the gates up during hunting season. I'm not sure that the one at High Heaven's open. But for the most part, we do see a lot less traffic, a lot less, like you say, recreating up there. We see where the damage is, where the wheelers are. We were riding, recreated the other night, was probably 8:00 at night. Hear gunshots across the, on Baker Creek. So it's kind of like, okay, let's, you know, somebody started practicing or doing something. As to the gate at High Heaven, it goes from basically the end of High Heaven to Vaughn Road. And I don't know if anybody's ever driven up or down Vaughn Road, but it's not in the greatest of shape. And also has a gate at the bottom of it. It's fairly steep. So if you get to the end of High Heaven Road, where it turns into, you know, basically the homeless road, you have a couple of sections either go back towards, you know, White Road, which is usually blocked off, or out towards the Res Road, which is usually blocked off. I mean, because those are either BLM gates or whatever. So, and 90, I think possibly 90% of the access off of High Heaven Road is all on private timberland, whether it be Hancock or Warehouser. I think there's some private pieces in there, but for the most part, those are the two big, main timber country, companies that own timber along that short section, it's probably four miles, between High Heaven Gate and where it leads up to Vaughn Road. You know, and those are usually access blocked off. There's very little BLM enforcement along that. Again, you open yourself up to the residents, increased traffic, dust. You talk about fire. I understand, I do agree with Alan, thinking that there should be some way of, if there is a fire up there, I'd say have a community box. All the people up there has to have a key to this community box that allows them to, guess what? This is, there's a gate, there's a fire down towards Willis Road, or it's coming, you know, this is our only way out. Let's access it that way. But to open it up just to, you know, like I said, to an access to basically 90% or 99% private ground, I don't understand that. Somebody else had mentioned the timber, or the fuel buildup inside that area. I think, again, I'm not a Warehouser fan, to be quite honest with you. I'm not for the leased properties and things like that, but this is what they do with their own property. They've done a pretty good job of managing, they do, I mean, of managing their properties and things build up as far as fuels and stuff like that. But as an informant, I just totally disagree with opening up that gate for the mere fact of everything that's going to, you know, what's gonna be involved. I live on High Heaven Road, but I understand what people do. And just to get up to the gate, it's not very, it's not a very good road, and not very well maintained. And the county's gonna be willing to take on that extra expense of, guess what, we don't even take up, take care of the road up to there. I'm not saying they don't, but for minimalized, because it's fairly steep. You know, if they're gonna take on that extra, you know, expense of taking another four, five, six miles of road to maintain it and pick up the garbage. Again, that's, I'm totally against opening it up, but I am for, I think somebody needs to be up there. I think there is somebody that has a key to the gate now that Warehouser's given to them in case of that area. I'm not really sure, but that's what I thought. Again, that's just my testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Slovic. John Boyd Char.
Again, this is all really helpful, too.
My name is Boyd Char. I live at 13055 Southeast Fletcher Road in Dayton. I've been in this area since 1975. I, at one time, was real familiar with the High Heaven area. To me, this is a whole lot bigger issue than just those two gates. If you look around up there, Warehouser has gates on most everything. And it's really put a bind on the sportsmen, the people that want to recreate up there. You can't hardly get anywhere anymore without coming up to a locked gate. High Heaven Road, Baker Creek Road, White Road, I can go on and on. It's getting real hard for the average man to hunt up there. And it's gonna get worse and worse. Warehouser's just gonna keep selling more leases and more leases. Pretty soon, you'll have to pay $500 and up to even have a chance of filling a deer tag or an elk tag. I understand fire danger. And I understand the criminal element. But it goes on my house, too. A gate isn't gonna stop that. Enforcement is what stops that. And public getting involved. There's been several times over the years where I found illegal dumps, well, two times, where I found illegal dumps, actually got information out of the dump site, give it to the county police so they can follow through. And that worked. So there's other ways of dealing with that. I just think that it's a whole lot bigger issue than just those two gates. I mean, if you go up there and look around, you'll see what I'm telling you. It's getting real hard. When I was younger, it didn't bother me to walk 10 miles to go deer hunting. As I get older, it's getting increasingly more difficult. And I run onto a lot of people up there in the same shape I am. It's getting to where they can't hardly hunt anymore because they can't get to where the good hunting is. That's about all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think I have one more, and that's Lonnie Sizer. So let him come on up and state your address, please.
My name is Lonnie Sizer. I live on 21020 Baker Creek Road, second to the last house before the gate. So I understand both sides because I have property and I pulled out six people in the last year and a half and watched the boat come down that Gail's towing, towed out that's been dumped and seen homeless up there. However, same thing with the sportsman's aspect. I belong to OHA for Yamp Hill County, and most of them don't hunt locally because they can't. There's not enough place. They can't get access to it. It's become private or recreational, and those are people mostly out of state buying those recreational permits. Our property borders one of those recreational. So I've talked to people up there and it's kind of a closed group. These are people that are asked every year continually on a list, and they're able to give out keys and copies of permits to anybody they want. Okay? These are people that are not from here. A lot of them, not all. I haven't met local people. But a lot of the people that I've run into are not from around Yamp Hill County. Okay, why are we not having access? So the High Heaven, as I agree, is a precursor. There are a lot of gates that shouldn't be across roads that we should visit. High Heaven's a good starter. Is it gonna cause issues with crime and dumping? Yes, we've had issues our entire lives. Okay, I grew up going up in the woods, partying, playing when I was a kid. What are we doing to our kids, forcing them to go somewhere else? Okay? Where is it safer? In town, out of town? Okay, weigh your options. The crime and everything's there. If the community gets involved, homeowners, including myself, get involved, scouts, I am a scout master, I want to take them up in the woods. Well, all of a sudden, I got more gates. Okay, so we hike in. If more community is up there, they can report these people, they can see people that are driving up there with trailers full of trash, with pickups full of trash. All of this can be reported. The shooting, absolutely same thing. You go right up to a gate and you'll see shells right at the gate. Walk right on the other side, it's no different. The gate truly isn't stopping everything. Is it helping? Yes, in a specific spot, but it's not supposed to be there to begin with. Okay? That's all I, I mean, the biggest thing is the gate wasn't supposed to be there to begin with, across the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sizer.
I think we've heard testimony from anybody, everybody that's filled out a card. So therefore, if we did, what I will do is I'll close the public hearing portion of the, of the public hearing, no, comment, and I'll bring it back around the commission for discussion and comments. So let's start with you, Commissioner.
What's, what are we, because we're not taking any action right now. Is that correct?
We can.
We can if we, if we elect to.
Well, then I have a proposal, I guess. I always want to go last.
So would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, you can make a motion.
Maybe I'll make comments first.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. Oh, make a motion. What am I making a motion for?
Whatever you want to make a motion for.
That we open it up for discussion on the board?
Uh, that's not a, that's, that's gonna...
That's not a motion, because that will come later, that will come...
Let's see, then I...
Do you have a motion about something, an action you'd like the board to take?
Yes.
Okay, that would be your motion.
Okay, great. I would make a motion that we develop an ordinance regarding gates on public roads, across public roads in the county. And then you'll tell me that's not what I'm supposed to do.
I'm not gonna tell you anything.
So that we do have, we do have a motion on the, on the table, that we develop an ordinance that regards developing policy for gates on public roads.
Right.
Okay, that's the ordinance. So...
Yes, across.
Across. So now, now that we have that motion, now we'll have discussion. So Commissioner Sterrett.
Thank you for your patience, Commissioner Sterrett.
No, I, I, what I would, I would like to, to say that I think that this is an issue we need to discuss. But I believe at this juncture, maybe primarily would be how we want to address this particular issue, because this has some immediacy. And we've, staff has devoted innumerable hours to this issue and this particular gate. So, so I would like to address your, your motion and say that one of the things that I really like about the county is that we take things on a case-by-case basis. We don't say we've got a hard and fast rule. So we, you can never do this and you can never do that. I think we should, I would like to see us study the issue of, of what an ordinance would look like and maybe have more board discussion, just to see what it is we're trying to, what is, is it a problem in search of, is it a solution in search of a problem or vice versa? So I think that's one issue. Yes, always willing to talk about it. But I think the more heavy-handed we are, I really like the fact that we take things case-by-case and that we're not so restrictive and bound by particular, we, we've got the guidance of the ORS. We use that to inform our decisions. But we have to discuss, I think, and with county council and administration, do we really, do we need an ordinance and what would that look like? And that would be board discussion. And I think that would be something for a later time.
Okay, I guess my comments is, is I've done a lot of studying and I find this a very perplexing situation because I know when I was first elected a county commissioner, and you hear this from all the county commissioners around the state, that, you know, there's 36 counties in the state of Oregon. What you hear is when you've seen one county, you've seen one county. Every county operates differently. What we do here as far as bridges, gates and everything, it isn't regulated. Josephine County may do, may do different. And I look at the gates like this, when you've seen one gated road, you've seen one gated road. You know, does, does the gated road access public, is a public road accessing public lands? If it's a public road that doesn't access any public lands and only accesses private lands, that could be another situation. The fact that it's a public road and under, under, under the way the ORS is statute now is being, so what was downgraded in, on Board Order 81809, which actually withdrew it from county road status and made it public access road status, we're not required to do any maintenance on the road. And I don't want to get us to a situation where we're required to do, like restore to county road, required to do maintenance on it. But I see this both ways. Philosophically, I'm against gating public roads. Philosophically, but I think like what Mary said, every situation is totally different. And the situation that I'm not happy with on this particular situation, isn't necessarily whether we decided as a commission to gate or not. What I'm not happy with is, is the way that we don't, I don't believe we put enough in when we renewed or transferred the permit from Warehouser, or from Willamette to Warehouser, that we put enough emphasis on it that says, Warehouser, this is how you will, if we left it gated, this is how you need to provide access to people. I'm all for that particular gate because I've been up in the road ever since I've been a boy, since I've been a teenager. I know what that road's like and I know Wallace Road, White Road, and all, Vaughn Road, Willamette Creek, every road around here. That road shouldn't be traveled on, period. But since it is a public road, I think the citizens have a right to go on to that road. But I'm not for necessarily ungating that road. But I am in favor of coming up with something, and I think your study of this whole situation is a good, good place to start. Because I don't even know how many gated county roads or public roads we have in the county.
I think it was Commissioner Sterrett who mentioned the study, but just...
Yeah, well, that's what I said. So I'm all for doing that kind of study. But this one, I think what we should, and the reason I don't necessarily this time agree, Commissioner, with your, with your recommendation, other than the study, is I think we need to get to the issue with this one. What are we gonna do?
Yeah.
And I would have, I had to have a recommendation after that, but we do have a motion on the, we do have a motion on the table, table now, so... But we do have a motion on the, we do have a motion on the table, table now, so.
And the board could choose to vote on the motion, or Commissioner Kula could withdraw his motion?
Well, I was, I was pushed to have a motion in order to make comments. So may I make comments now, Christian?
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that it's, I think there were many comments from the folks who were opposed and/or opposed and a proponent of opening gates or keeping them closed to provide access. I feel like Sean, who suggested the thing about a box where everybody can go to, to get their keys out or to get, to unlock and provide key access. And I think that something like that, rather than every single person having access, having a key, it seems like a great kind of in-between solution. And I said that, I, I should confess that, like a number of the people here, I actually live on a gated road as well. And I have experienced all the same things along that gated road that the folks who live along the gated road have experienced. We don't, ours makes a loop, and so there's two gates, and it's just a farm field and a park. And so as you can imagine, when it's just a farm field and a park, a lot of activity happens when it's not gated. The solution that was come up with for that one, which seems to work for all of us, but it's different than your situation with the, the road that goes somewhere, is that a farm worker opens the gate every morning at sunrise, and he closes the gate every day at sundown. And there's a warning sign, and sometimes people get caught on the other side of it. And they're very embarrassed about that usually. Sometimes I get caught on the other side of it, too. So I want to make sure that we can accommodate the people on the road, the landowners, as soon as possible, I guess. The, the other thing to comment about is that I believe there was some comments about wildfire risk. And if you go on, I think it's called Oregon Wildfire Risk Explorer, it's like an interactive website. You can find the wildfire risk for each area in Yamhill County. And your area has the highest wildfire risk, according to the state of Oregon. So, you know, just something to put out there from the state that it is a real, it's a real thing.
So I was just going to say, would you like to withdraw your motion or pursue with your motion or amend your motion? Because we have to deal with each specific thing. So you've got a motion now that we do, that you want an ordinance regarding gates countywide.
Right.
And do you want to continue with that motion, make a motion so we can vote on it?
And let me respond to the, the comments on the motion for the ordinance. And that's that I believe that our county needs to be more proactive in our approach to things rather than taking a case-by-case basis. Because as Lonny maybe said, or Boyd, there, it's, it's all over the county that we have gates that are closed. And to just address one, I know that we need to address one now, but to only address one and not address the others, I think, is something that we need to work on, like John's suggestion. So, okay, I made my comments now.
So again, to your motion, do you have a motion? Would you like to, or you do have a motion, would you like to?
I do have a motion.
Okay.
Can, can I amend it with the key comment?
Uh, you can do what you want.
Okay. Well, then I make a motion that we provide a way for keys to the issue to neighboring landowners and then to study the issue, the, study developing an ordinance so that we can provide keys to more people on, along their gates. Yes, would that be, does that make any sense?
Yeah, it does. I guess I have a clarification for Christian.
Yeah.
This public hearing was strictly to comment or take action if we elect to on a permit for two gates, and it says along or across High Heaven Road.
Correct.
So what Casey is asking to do, do this, do the ordinance that got point, that accounts for bridges, I mean, gates in general across the county, is that allowable under these? Because this is supposed to be for High Heaven Road.
Or should we wait on that?
By itself.
So there were two pieces to the, to the motion. One was to, what I would suggest amounts to a changing of the conditions of the existing permit.
Right.
And there would probably need to be some further discussion on how exactly you wanted those conditions implemented. Who's responsible for providing the keys? Who, if you're asking Warehouser to do all this, or are you asking the county to do that? So maybe it would be best to have two separate motions. One, if the board is ready to discuss and make a decision on whether or not you're interested in changing the conditions, and then a separate motion. Or if there's agreement that there's, you know, a need to study the possibility of a countywide ordinance, you wouldn't necessarily need to take action on that today.
Right.
You could take it under advisement, and we could set up a work session in the next couple of weeks for the board to further discuss what an ordinance like that might look like. And then, of course, obviously, once it's been drafted and presented and we go through the statutory process required to implement an ordinance, which involves public comment and an opportunity for folks to be heard on it, then the board would vote on the ordinance at that time.
Thank you. So can I amend my, my motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we change the conditions of the permit.
To require-
To allow for neighbors to have keys.
It would be to review Board Order 18-398.
Can you repeat the earlier part of that, say that first part of your motion?
My motion would be to change the conditions of the permit that allowed Warehouser to continue to have a gate.
And that would be Board Order, if I believe it's right, 18-398.
And do you want to, do you want to include it there, the conditions that you'd like to add to the permit?
I think that we could discuss it, but once I made the motion.
Well, your motion would be, in other words, when you make a motion-
Yes.
You're, we're going to be voting on something that you're proposing. And then when you make that motion, we'll vote on it. We can have discussion, and then we can do another motion. But at this point, we're waiting on your, what you'd like your motion, or if that is your final, is that your final answer?
Sounds good. Let's wait. To clarify then.
Restate your motion.
Restating the motion. A motion to change the conditions of the permit for the gate across High Heaven Road to allow neighboring landowners' keys to the gate. Nice and simple.
Okay. And, I mean, would you like to clarify who's going to provide those keys and how? Or would you like to have discussion about that and then?
I would love to see the county do that, so.
What does that mean?
What does that mean? I think Bill Gillie has a key, so.
Yeah, under the current permit, law enforcement, fire department, and the county have a key.
Just a, under the current permit, there's, there's just one thing I'd like to add.
Yeah, and I don't have the current permit, with apologies.
You know, with the conditions, at the time that it was approved in 2001, Willamette Industries, you know, there was conditions. They can allow businesses or persons with legitimate reasons for access passage through the gates upon a reasonable request. And then keys to the gate shall be given to Boise Cascade, Mack Water and Light, Yamhill County Sheriff. You know, so the board at that time mandated that Warehouser, you know, issue the keys. You know, my recommendation, you know, because of, you know, if, you know, as far as if you want the county to be issuing keys and receiving keys, or if you, you know, or if it's better just to, Warehouser shall provide keys to the neighboring landowners upon request or some other means that if you were going to add that condition, you know, it's the administrative burden, whether or not it's going to be on the county or, you know, on Warehouser. Warehouser's being permitted to have this gate, so. And they're leasing property and giving keys. And so I guess my staff recommendation would kind of lean towards, I think it'd be better for Warehouser to issue these keys and manage those keys, or come up with a solution like a, a lockbox or something like that, you know, other than having the county involved with issuing and reissuing keys and managing that.
Can, do we know how many houses there are above Willis Road that we're talking about?
No, I, I didn't, I didn't get a count on that.
Somebody in the audience might.
Yeah, you have a packet I gave you, and, and it has exactly 101, and it, it slipped through to-
Do you have an idea ballpark?
Um, I believe it's, right now, it's 18 total county, the ones that just sold that are buildable, that are houses and dwellers.
So 18, 20, something like that.
And that is, and Mary, that's above the intersection of-
Okay, excuse me.
I would much rather not have a lockbox.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, just for a procedural thing, once we're in discussion, the public hearing is closed. Go ahead.
And, and the other thing I was going to add is, you know, with that language that's, that's in there as far as issuing the keys, so, I mean, those are for, you know, they're basically, required to give keys to the landowners on the other side of the gate, you know, that need to get access Mack Water and Light and, and the other private landowners that are back there. So that's why I was leaning towards that direction.
So your issue was, I mean, your, your recommendation. Caroline, did you, did you pass down what his, what Casey's actually last motion was?
It was, oh.
His first motion?
Yeah, Casey's motion.
To develop amendments for gates across public roads.
That was the first one.
That was the first one. And the one he amended, do you have what he amended?
It was to change the conditions of the permit to write keys to the gate.
And then we, we started to specify, we wondered specifying who was providing the keys. Yeah.
So maybe I can make a suggestion. If, if there's still some additional clarification required to, to better understand or flesh out the conditions that the board might like to consider, you could consider instructing staff to go ahead and do some additional work, to come up with some conditions that could then come back before the board, and then you'd have something more specific to discuss and decide. And then we can, in the meantime, take a look at what those, what those conditions might be.
So we have a motion, and we're, we're not at the point of discussion. So I just want to make sure where we're starting, because we've had two motions. We're not, we're not at the point of discussion, so can we deal with the two motions?
Well, you are as regards to the second motion, which was to change the conditions on the permit. You're in the discussion portion of that.
So are we, so, okay. Can you give us the motion that you would like us to discuss? And then, and then can we discuss that motion? Because I'd like to discuss that.
So Christian gave me the option, or provided some solutions. And so my final one that I, most recently, I amended the previous motions to simply be that the county amend the conditions of the permit for a gate across High Heaven Road to allow the neighboring landowners from Willis to the gate keys.
Okay, so we have a motion.
We have a motion. Okay, we have a motion, and I think we have a motion required, everybody understands the motion.
In that, are you instructing staff to then determine what those, what those conditions would be and how the property owners would, would be given access to the gate?
That's, I was, that's what I was going to do, is I was going to ask if you wanted to amend it with staff's recommendations.
Amend with staff's recommendations.
Yes, okay. So Mary, do we think, do we have that down now?
Do we have enough room for discussion?
Well, that's what we should be doing now.
No, that's, that's what we're, now, now we can do more discussions, so. We have our recommendations, so.
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
And, and what I would like to suggest is-
Thank you for your patience.
Instead of, at this particular juncture, I would not be in favor of asking the county to give keys to property owners. What I would like to do is for us to look into what that would look like, what that would mean for the county, who would be in charge of the key. I really like that if we sort of had a Knox Box Lite kind of a thing, where you had a, a community box, and then Warehouser being the ones who would administer that so that the county doesn't get the calls and the responsibility and the liability of the whole key thing. So Warehouser, basically, if we could visit with them and try to get them to put some kind of a community box, because I-
Well, I, I think that, I think that's a good idea.
I think we were all hoping that someone from Warehouser might be here today to, to give their perspective. We do have a letter in the record that they provided. But again, I, I think what might be appropriate is if the board simply chooses to instruct staff to, to look into this further and perhaps prepare some draft conditions, we can, we can have conversation offline, you know, with Warehouser about the, the prospect of a, of a lockbox or some sort of, some sort of access for, for homeowners. Prepare a draft, prepare draft revisions to the permit, which we would then allow Warehouser and the public to see. Could have another session at which you could take comment from both the public and Warehouser on those new conditions, and then the board could, could make a decision.
Yeah, and that's what I was basically saying, is I don't think we're ready to, to say, let's give everybody keys. What we, I would like to see us do is basically bring them into the, into the discussion, talk with county council, and just find out what that would look like, and then come back and, you know, make a decision on what we want those conditions to look like.
Right, and I understand that was Casey's last amendment, to, to do that and to have staff look, look at it and come back, come back to us with recommendations.
Yeah, and, and- For recommendations for providing access through the gate to-
Yeah, and, and just for clarification purposes, I don't believe you need to make a motion and have a vote if what you're doing is instructing staff to look into the issue, prepare some draft conditions that then would come back to the board for consideration. You could vote at that time on the draft conditions. I think we all have, and I believe the board does, a pretty good understanding of both the, the folks who would like the gate to remain the way it is and those who would like to see some greater access provided. So I think we have a pretty good sense of what those conditions might look like. I think that would be an appropriate and acceptable way for the board to, again, not take any formal action today, but just instruct staff to go back and take a look at what some of these draft conditions might look like and, and give us a deadline to come back. Bring those draft conditions to the, you know, the informal on a specific date so that we make sure this issue's moving forward.
Okay, I will, then as chair now, I will ask Commissioner Kula to withdraw his motion. And when you do that, then I'll go ahead and direct staff to report back to, to look at.
And you're certainly free to continue the discussion.
Yeah.
Right. Now, I, I appreciate that, appreciate you explaining and also providing the options. Well, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Should I tell you the whole motion?
No, we, we, we know, you don't have to tell us, we know what to do.
Wait, he's nodding.
No, no, I'm nodding in a-
You don't have to tell us. So your, your motion is then, then withdrawn, then we can have more discussions. And part of the discussions is, I would like to recommend staff to go back and look into the conditions that'll go along with the permit that's been issued and, and provide us with recommendations, work with Warehouser and provide us with recommendations of how that permit may be restructured or modified.
Yeah, and specifically looking at ways to provide access to homeowners.
Because we know, yeah, because you've been here, you guys have heard the conversations, so. So I'll just direct, if there's no objections, I'll direct staff to, as chair, to go ahead and do that and report back, report back to us by, on a specific date. Christian, what do you think?
First informal session in February, should be sufficient.
That's more than enough time.
Yeah, the first, the first formal session, or informal.
First informal. We'll target that date, and if we have more information sooner, we can discuss about putting it on as soon as we're ready.
Since there isn't a motion necessary for that, can we also add to that, Chair? Proposed language for an ordinance that covers all gate permits.
I think that's a whole different, that's a whole different thing, and I would like to see that brought up and discussed in an informal. And then if we want an ordinance for that, we can determine if we want to create an ordinance.
I apologize, I didn't, I didn't go back to revisit your discussion about the ordinance. Yeah, that is a much more involved, time-consuming process. We can certainly, if, if the majority of the board wants to go in that direction, we can certainly continue to have those discussions and probably, again, a topic that's appropriate for an informal to talk about what that ordinance might look like. But I think if we take it in two steps and, and address the immediate-
The immediate.
-access issue at this gate, and then the board can have further conversations about whether or not there's interest in, in that ordinance. But you're right.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, so I think staff now has our direction, what we would like them to do, and they will report back to us, the first, the first informal meeting in February, which will be on a Tuesday. be on a Tuesday. Okay?
And you all are welcome to that, too. Just because it's informal doesn't mean you can't come.
Um, I'd like to thank everybody for attending. You could see there's, you know, what, what seems like, whether you lock a gate or unlock a gate is a simple matter. But as we heard from everybody here today, there's so much to do with it. It's just not a simple issue. And we wanted to make sure we deal, deal with the issue at hand, is what we did with High Heaven Road, and then further address the issue at a later time of what we do with all, whether we have policy on all county roads in Yamhill County. So I guess for, the only really proponent of unlocking gate, we had a couple, was that it will be discussed the first weekend, and we'll have recommendations from staff in how we ensure that residents get access through that, through that gate, so. Okay. Do we have anything more? Item F is announcements. Do commissioners have any announcements? Commissioner Starett?
On this topic, interestingly enough, met with Assistant Senior County Council Todd Sadlow and Representative Ron Noble on how we can sort of craft a, a bit of legislation which would help with some of the, the issues regarding people who decide to show up on your land and stay there, and make lots of, you know, generate garbage and crime and all that. So we are working on that. It's not going to be an easy fix, but interesting subject for future discussions.
Yeah. Commissioner, Commissioner Kula?
No, I'm just really grateful to hear from all of you.
I think the only comment I have, and to go back to the gates, too, is I've had some incidental conversations with Representative Noble, and also with a couple of the state senators regarding the ORS that, that dictate county roads and public roads. And tell them I thought they were woefully inadequate. The old pre-1981 version was much better than what the version is now. There's still, there is, I agree, there's a lot of vagueness. And so hopefully, we're going to do something either through, and this is also an issue with other counties, so we're going to try to do something either through legislative action and see what the feelings are through associated oriente counties, and if other counties are having this same issue, and how they may be able to lobby as a member of AO.
Right.
See how they may be able to lobby for us to get something done at a state level, so.
Sounds great.
Okay, so do we have anything else? Mary, you have anything else? Do you have anything else? Casey, nothing else? Meeting adjourned.
And I have lots of other things.